But welcome. You know, it's been awhile since we've had one of these joint meetings. And the first thing I have to do officially is to call our City Council Planning and Zoning Commission a joint meeting for Monday, October 8th to order. So we're now officially in our meeting tonight. So it's an exciting time for here in Mesquite. As most of you have talked about, we've all kind of discussed early on, there's many, many things happening and, you know, it's a great, it's a great time to be here. Last week was, was a challenging week, but then you finish up Saturday with 1,100-plus volunteers out working all over our city. And I've just heard report after report, many of you in this room were part of that, they came together to help their fellow citizens. And so, just, just seeing that and seeing that what transpired was a tremendous week, way to finish off that week. But you know, I'd like to just kind of welcome everybody on behalf of the City Council. We appreciate having the opportunity to sit together and have a joint meeting tonight. You know, we're going to be looking at our comprehensive plan. And although I haven't seen an exact date, it's somewhere between 17 to 20 years since we've taken a hard look like this at our, at our comprehensive plan for the city. And it's very important for us as a planning tool and for staff as a planning tool as we look forward into the future. And my challenge, and hopefully some of us still be around in a few years, that we do this on a 10-year basis, that somebody remembers in 10 years to remind the council at that time to, to review the, the plan and see what it looks like moving forward. You know, we're really talking about land use. And that's the predominant thing that the comprehensive plan looks at is land use. And as mentioned earlier, we're one of the few suburbs that touches the city of Dallas that still has a great opportunity for growth. And I know, we all know that in this room, but looking at that growth, planning that growth, and making sure that it's the right kind of growth is what we want to do. Tonight, we'll get a brief introduction and kind of an explanation of what this process is all about. After that brief introduction, you can see us sitting at these tables, I've been told that we will have a chance to participate in two visioning exercises. So as we're kind of divided up.
Yes.
That's right. I knew somebody would be excited about that tonight. So thank you Councilman Noshay for that. So, but after we get through with that and have an opportunity to share, then we'll come back together and the facilitator will have a chance to tell us what the next steps are. Obviously, it's not just going to be us. You know, this is a large process and we're going to be doing a lot of things and involving a lot of people. And we'll have, we'll hear more about that as the night goes on. One thing I would tell you all, and those of you that meet in this room and notice the cameras and the microphones, normally we broadcast live these meetings. Tonight, we're not broadcasting live, but we are recording. So just remember, anything that you do or touch, it's being recorded. So anyway, just so you know. But we are, we're really, we really are excited about this opportunity because, you know, what's, what's the old adage? If you don't plan, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And that's something that, you know, we joke about, and I joke, sorry, I joke about. But the reality is, if we don't have a vision of where we're going, where we'd like to take this city, it probably, we probably won't get to where we need to get to. So I think that's, that's the exciting part. At this time, is there any questions just about logistics or anything that we need to go over? All right. So at this time, I'd like to bring up our director, planning and development. There he is, Mr. Jeff Armstrong, come up to kind of talk to about it for facilitators tonight. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. We are excited to be starting this and we appreciate the council budgeting, making it possible to do this process. We're really excited to get started. We were at Taste and Trade, what, a week ago, two weeks ago, whenever that was. But this is really one of the first real kickoffs to this, to this project. And the consultants will talk about it more in a minute, but the first few months, it's very important to get public input. And you're the first bit of public that's going to be providing us input, but there's certainly going to be a lot more of that. If you're not aware, there is a, a survey that is already live on our website. For anybody who wants to take that survey, please do. But I would like to just go ahead and introduce to you our consultants. You may recall, you approved a contract with them a few meetings back, but Freez and Nichols. They're a well, very highly regarded planning consultant, engineering and other things too, but we're concerned about planning right now, in Texas and beyond. So we have four, four team members that have been working with us and will continue to work with us. So I'm going to introduce you all real quickly and then I'll, I'll have the project manager come up in a couple of minutes. But we'll start back there. Dan Seffco, he's a senior advisor for the project. Wendy Shabey, she's the principal in charge. And then we've got Shad Kommo, he is our project manager. He's the guy who day-to-day is running the show for us from the consultants. And along with Garrett Langford, manager of planning and zoning, who is coordinating with Shad on a very regular basis. And then finally, one of our own, used to be part of our team, Alexis Garcia, she's the assistant project manager on this project. So really happy to have this group, think very highly of them, and I hope you will too by the time this is all over. With that, I know, most of you know each other and, but for the citizens and for those of you who may not, I'm going to have you go around the tables real quickly and just introduce yourselves. And we'll just start maybe here with Mr. Archer and work our way around that table and work our way this way, if that's all right.
Good evening. Bruce Archer, City Council, spent two and a half years on planning and zoning.
I'm John Matthews, principal planner for the city.
Robert McCallister, City Council.
David Gassop, City Council.
Sherri Williams, planning and zoning commission.
Sean Fox, special projects director for the city.
Greg Noshay, City Council.
Debbie Anderson, planning and zoning commission.
Dan Oliver, City Council.
Ted Jimm, managing director of planning and zoning.
Jeff Cassidy, City Council.
Rodney Green, planning and zoning.
Stan Pigott, Mayor.
Pupkey Healy, City Manager.
Alonzo Shepherd, planning and zoning.
Amy Burris, City Council.
Jennifer Erkin.
Jennifer, planning and zoning.
Garrett Langford, manager of planning and zoning.
All right, thank you. Hopefully that'll help our consultants know who they've got in the room and get started. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Shad now, and I think he's going to run the show for most of the rest of the night. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and Jeff, for the introduction. I think you guys did such a great job. We can just move into the exercises, right? But again, my name is Shad Kommo, project manager with Freez and Nichols. So this is just a brief overview of the agenda that we'll go through. We'll go through this information. And as I said earlier, we'll have some very fun exercises. We'll, we'll kind of sit down and listen, because that's really the most important part of a planning process, is really listening to not only the city, city leadership, but the residents as well. And so, we want to make sure that we're understanding your issues, understanding your vision for the city, so that we can make sure that we're developing a well comprehensive plan. That was just a picture of our smiling faces. Why is planning important? So, this, the city is made up of various pieces, elements and components. And so, when you start to dig into those things, sometimes it becomes difficult to see where certain things come into place. You don't want to have different organizations and departments to start planning in silos and doing things in silos. So the comprehensive plan helps to put those pieces together so that you can have that complete puzzle in that picture. The comprehensive plan also establishes a blueprint. If you've ever built a home before, there was a blueprint, some detailed drawings that were put together. And so, the comprehensive plan helps us to look at some of those details. Although the comprehensive plan is a, is a vision document, it is high level and to a certain extent, but it also provides a blueprint so we can start to see some of those detailed pieces that puts, puts the puzzle together. It also gives us direction. We need to know where we're going, we need to know where we, where we've been. And so, this comprehensive plan is going to give us direction, city leadership direction to help make decisions for certain things at, in the future of the city. And again, it creates that vision. So at the end of the day, we want to know where we're headed. We want to know what that big picture looks like. And so, the comprehensive plan is going to give us that vision, because it pulls in all aspects of the city, all other plans that have been developed in the past. And so, it creates that vision, gives us something to head for and to target toward. So a little bit about what a comprehensive plan is. Generally, it includes these various components that you see here. Future land use being one of those most important pieces, because it helps to kind of guide your development of your land. Not only the land that you hadn't developed yet, but also the land that has been developed in terms of redevelopment and infill. It looks at your growth capacity, it also looks at transportation, neighborhood. So it looks at all those components of the city. So the comprehensive plan, it's a, it's a, it's a guide, as we mentioned earlier. It establishes city policies, it also helps to make decisions as well. And it combines all the things that the city is, is working toward, all those initiatives, all the previous planning efforts that you've done. We don't want to, we don't want to throw anything out the window. Although we, we may look at things and say, well, this needs to tweak and change a little bit, but we want to consider all those things so we can place them into a comprehensive document. It provides the, the basis for zoning and land use decisions. It doesn't dictate it, but it just kind of provides the basis for it and kind of gives, and helps to inform it. And then also, a lot of cities, they have capital improvement plans. And so, those are the detailed projects that you have developed and you tweak year to year. And so, it helps to kind of provide that basis and make sure those things are still on target. So what the comprehensive plan is not, is not a zoning ordinance. A lot of times, we get the question from citizens that, that feel like the comprehensive plan maybe dictates what they can do with their property. It, it doesn't. It kind of, again, it provides that, that basis and that, that guidance for those various land uses. And so, it's, it's not a rigid document. A lot of times, you might hear the word "living document," and that's what the comprehensive plan is. It's a living document. In other words, what we come up with as a city, at the end of the day, when we complete this project next year, doesn't mean that that's written in stone or that it can't change. So it's a living document, because there are going to be some things that we can't foresee in the future. So we want to make sure that this document is flexible enough so that it can be changed over time. And then it's not the final answer to, to all the, the city's challenges that you may face. Although I think we wish that we could answer all the, all the questions and kind of know all these things, but we, we live in a society that changes, we live in the economic times that change. And so, there's some things that we can't foresee, and so, it's not going to provide the answer to all things, but it'll give us a, a good basis and a direction as we move forward. So talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan that, that we're working on for the city of Mesquite. These are the elements of the plan, the major elements of the comprehensive plan. Future land use, again, that helps to kind of guide your, your land use decisions. We know in, in the city that there's some undeveloped property, especially along I-20. And so, what does that look like? Or what, what should that be? And so, the future land use plan is going to inform us of that. Mobility and circulation, which goes hand in hand with future, with the future land use plan. If you're going to have some future land uses, we need to have access to those. We need to make sure that development is able to get to certain areas that may be not so accessible today. We're going to also do a little bit of assessment on the housing and neighborhood. So you are a first ring suburb, and so there are some, some areas and some that have been around for a long time. So how do we, how do we improve those areas? We want to make sure that we're maintaining the, the integrity of our homes. And so, we're going to look at the housing and neighborhood. Community design and character. In the metroplex, there are a lot of cities, as you know, and so that's a lot of competition as well. And cities are competing with one another. They're competing with one another, not only for businesses and commerce, but for residents as well. And so, the community design is an important factor in a lot of cities where they want to make sure that when you come to Mesquite, you know you're in Mesquite, but also that Mesquite has a distinct character and characteristics as, as well. And then finally, public safety and health. This is, this is, doesn't only refer to, are there any food deserts in the city that we need to pay attention to? But are there some things and amenities in the city for our residents and our neighbor, and our citizens to be able to walk and, and get exercise and, and, and make sure that they're living that healthy lifestyle? We know that there's a big push and initiative in, in healthy living, and so we want to make sure that that's captured and addressed in this comprehensive plan. So the planning process that we'll go through in order to get to the, the final product, we're, we're looking at this in three phases. So the first phase, phase one, is really where we really dig into the existing conditions of the city, listening, as I mentioned earlier, listening to city leadership and listening to the citizens and stakeholders in Mesquite, to be able to get a good understanding of what we're working with. What are those existing conditions? Where do we stand today? And so, this process, this phase takes a, a little time. We'll probably go through about two to three months of just gathering information and getting input. And I'll talk about that in a few minutes. And then phase two is where we start to kind of dig into the components, the elements of the plan that I just went through, getting more detailed information, developing analysis, and, and starting to provide some preliminary recommendations of, of what the plan and these various elements are going to start to look like. And then finally, what I think is one of the most important phases is phase three, that's implementation. At the end of the day, we don't want, we don't want a plan that's going to sit on the shelf. We want to make sure that this is a plan that you can actually use. And so, we want to create an implementation plan that has some actions in there, that has some action steps, some jump steps, jump, jumpstart steps in there, in order to move forward. There are going to be some departments that have assignments that come out of this comprehensive plan. There's going to be certain staff members that have assignments that come out of this plan. Citizens also have a role in an implementation as well. And we want to also make sure that we identify some low-hanging fruit. Again, we don't want this plan to sit on the shelf. We want to make sure that it's action-oriented, so that there are some things that can start to be done. The, the best way to start to get citizen input and buy-in is when you start to do those things and implement those various things, that helps them to kind of see, well, I see that the city is moving in this direction, or they're doing this and that. And then you have the citizens' input and their, their buy-in as well. And then hopefully, at the end, we'll, we'll have this plan officially adopted so that you all can move forward and start the fun process of, of planning for the future. So I just want to give a little plug for kind of the, the survey that we have out on, online right now. This is the website. Also, before you leave, if you haven't, there's a couple of things that I'd like you to, to pick up. This brochure here gives you some information, detailed information, all you want to know about comprehensive planning and the process that we're going through. This card here is a small, take the survey card, take these and hand them to your, your neighbors and your friends, your church members, as well as these, and, and this will give them a good, a good start of what the comprehensive plan and what it's all about. We also have, in this process, we're going to be developing Meetings to Go. So what Meetings to Go is, is a, is a box that has all the information that you need in order to facilitate your own meeting. So if you want to take it to your HOA, or you want to take it to your, your church, hopefully you could get permission from the pastor to maybe take a little bit time on, from Bible study and, and introduce this. But we want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to spread the news about the comprehensive plan as well. So that's the website there, you can go on there. And if you haven't taken the, the online survey, we really encourage you to do so. We get so much great information from these surveys, and, and it's, it's anonymous, so you could tell us whatever's on your mind. But we get great information from this, and it really helps give us an understanding of some of those issues and the visions of the community. How many of you have taken the survey already? All right? All right, great. So we have a, the majority of the room hasn't, so we want to make sure that you, you take that survey as soon as possible. And we also have these, before you leave also, this is a car charger. It has the comprehensive plan logo on there, so when you plug it in your car, you're plugging up your phone. If you hadn't taken the survey, hopefully this will remind you to, to take the survey later that day. I want to talk a little bit about planning context. So planning in, in the city of Mesquite isn't anything new. You guys have been planning over the years, and that's, that's really great that you, you have that, that you've established that. And so, you could kind of see over the timeline that there's various plans that have been created. So we'll be looking at these plans to see if there's still some relevant recommendations in there, and looking at some baseline information to see how we update that information and how we incorporate it into the comprehensive plan. I guess most recently, your downtown infrastructure plan that is currently in progress. We'll also be coordinating those efforts as well to make sure that they're included in our process. We're going to look a little bit at some demographics. So demographics, and this is just a few key demographics. Demographics are important as well, and they, they tell a story about your community. They also create a theme and they create patterns to, to kind of help establish some baseline and the foundation of the city. So you'll kind of see the historical population in these numbers. I'm, I'm, I'm really excited, especially as a planner, anticipating the 2020 census that's about to, you know, going to start pretty soon. Probably next year, you'll start seeing that information coming out from the Census Bureau. But it is, it'll help to kind of see how these estimates over the last past 10 years, if they're on track or they're, they're not. So these are estimates from the Census Bureau, from the American Community Survey, those last five-year estimates. So it kind of shows you your historical population growth over the last several, several, several years. And so, you'll see that spike that really took off between 1940 and the 1960s. And so, there's various reasons that this spike took, took off, especially being a first ring suburb in the metroplex. And so, there's, there's a story there. You also see the demographics of, of the race and ethnicity as well. So what I, what I found that was interesting is the median age for the community is 32.3. And if you look at those various bars there for the, the age ranges, this also tells a story. You see from the age 25 to 34, all the way to 55 to 59, that's a large peak there. And so, what are, what are those residents needing? When you think about those people in those age ranges, what, what are their needs? Also, when you go past that, we know that the baby boomers are, are a big population, and they're starting to, to age and place, and there are certain needs that they, they have as well. So we want to make sure that we're creating a community so a person can age and place. In other words, a person doesn't have to live in Mesquite in, in their peak years, but then have to move somewhere else to find what they need. We want to make sure that we have everything in a community so that anybody, whatever their age is, they're able to age and place. It's no surprise that single-family residential is your largest residential land use. But again, we want to make sure that we have a variety of, of housing options as well for the demographic. The age of your housing, you'll see that, that large peak there between 1980 and 1989. So you, you have some fairly, fairly new housing products. But again, as I mentioned earlier, as housing products start to age, we want to look at, how, how do we maintain these? Do we, do we look at a lot of infill, or, or are there some areas that need to redevelop? So we're going to be looking a little closer at that. Household income, your, your median income there. The employment by industry kind of gives you a breakdown of the various, at a high level, those various employment sectors that are represented in a city. Again, if we look at this chart, are there some things that we want to attract more of, employment sectors, or some things that we may not want to attract more of? And so, this is some good telling information that'll give us a little bit of, of direction. So before I move forward, before we move forward into exercises, are there any questions about the comprehensive plan or the process that we're about to embark on? All right? Great. All right, so now it's time for, for us to have a little bit of fun. So we're going to go through two exercises. We're going to go through an issue identification exercise, and then we're going to go through a visioning exercise. We're going to have facilitators at each table. There's also staff members represented at each table as well. And so, we're going to capture some information on the charts. We'd like you to select someone who's going to be a spokesperson for your table, because after the, that particular exercise, we want to make sure that everybody hears what's been said at the table. And so, we're going to have a spokesperson representative from each table to kind of give a summary of the things that you discuss. So first, the issue identification exercise, these are just a few questions that, that kind of help prompt the, the discussion. But we want you to identify some issues that are facing Mesquite today. And when I say issues, issues are not always bad things or negative things. Issues can be positive things as well. But you'll see a list of questions there that'll kind of help you to, to kind of prompt that discussion. But what we want you to kind of come back to the group and to report to the rest of us is, if you see at the bottom there, it says right down the top three issues facing Mesquite. So you'll come up with several issues at your tables, but what are those top three issues that you have identified, that you kind of agree upon as a group? And not only that, we also want you to identify those top three areas in the city of Mesquite that need to be focused on. Is it a certain corridor? It's a certain neighborhood, certain area of the city? So we want you to kind of identify those as well. And so, after we went through this issue identification exercise, I want to take about, I think we said 20 to 30 minutes, and we'll kind of listen to see when things are kind of wrapping up, if we wrap up a little bit earlier. But we want, want you to take about 20 to 30 minutes, discuss those, and we'll come back and, and report out from each group, each table. Any questions on the exercises? Okay, we'll get started and we'll be right back. Everyone has had a chance to kind of go through the issues and top three areas. So everyone have your spokesperson identified? Okay, we're going to start, we're going to start on this end. So if you...
Okay, so three, three global issues, issue identification that we have. First of all, is our infrastructure.
Sorry. Is our infrastructure. Both the aging nature of our infrastructure and how we will supplement development in our infrastructure. Is that fair to say that we've captured that? That's a first key issue facing Mesquite. A second one, and I would bunch a, a couple of these areas is the, we talked about the conditions of older neighborhoods, but we're also talking about enhancement and revitalization of our residential neighborhoods in Mesquite as being a key issue. You know, Mesquite is as strong as its neighborhoods are, and the more vigorous and the more revitalized our neighborhoods are, the better the quality of life, the enhanced tax base. But the last one is sort of a global one. Is it, is okay to do the tax base issue? Is an enhancement of our tax base. Sort of our North Star and our guiding principle in development is, you know, what enhances the quality of life in Mesquite, but also enhances the tax base for Mesquite? And that doesn't mean allowing everything to develop whatever, because things have to fit. You can put something in somewhere and it may actually harm something. You might be putting something in an infill area and it might, you know, harm an area. Then again, you might put something in there and it may enhance the tax base of an area. And so, what we look at when we look at an enhancement of the tax base is enhancement of the entire city's ability to pay for the revitalization of our neighborhoods and addressing our aging infrastructure through an enhancement of our tax base.
Good job, good job. Who's your spokes...
The three top areas to focus on. We'll, we'll come back to you on that.
Who's your spokes?
Ditto, ditto, and ditto. We were looking at economic diversity, needing more diversification in our shopping centers and our retail outlets. centers and our retail outlets. Aging infrastructure, that was real big on our conversation as well. Aging neighborhoods as well. Uh, we've got to do something to bring those back to life. And, okay, that was our three, right? And our three areas that we were thinking and that we needed the most attention, north Mesquite, as it borders Dallas and Highland Park, um, Town East Mall area, got to be revitalized and support the retail there, and of course, our I-20 corridor, building it up.
Okay, well, we do share the same agreement that we have aging infrastructure. However, we, we believe that we need to expand our industry and our commercial in order to produce a better tax base in order to pay for it. We need to alleviate a little bit of the tax base that's on our citizens. The lack of housing choices. We get told a lot that we don't have affordable housing. We have a lot of affordable housing. There's one area where we have half-million-dollar homes or million-dollar homes. We need to bring in diversity, where we can accommodate for everybody. Um, citizen engagement involvement. We need to do better at communicating with the citizens. I talk to people all the time about this. Bridging the gap between city and citizen, helping people to understand a vision, or if they don't understand, explaining it to them and bringing them on board, where you can listen to them and, and get ideas from them. Our three top focus area are Trinity Point, the Town East area, and the downtown slash rodeo, the Mayor District. We believe that needs now out. We also have, um, right over here, the southeast corner, we need to work on the Lucas family about that, but that's another one.
All right, was it anything that was a surprise that you all heard at your tables? Okay. That's, that's good, because that means that we're, we're all on one accord, so this would, this would be a good process as we go through. All right, so, we're going to move to our next exercise, visioning. This is where you can kind of put on your, your goggles, if you will, and kind of look out into the future. Um, remember, we looked at, uh, some of the demographics. So, when you, when you, when we're talking about visioning, we want to make sure that we're not only planning for the present, um, but the, the future as well. So, what, what are some of the, the, the future generation's going to need? What, what are their needs going to be? When we think about our grandchildren or our children, uh, what are, what are some of the things that they're going to need, the land uses that are going to accommodate them? So, we want to make sure that we're keeping other generations as mind, in mind as well. So, in, in your groups, we want you to kind of look out 10 to 20 years. Um, as I mentioned before, sometimes it's hard to plan far out, but we want to make sure we kind of look in at 10 to 20 years, something that's a little bit more manageable. Uh, what, what are some assets to Mesquite? We want you to talk about that at your table. What, what are some opportunities? And I know we talked a little bit about that in the, in the issue identification that has come up at most of the tables. So, we want to kind of talk about these things. Um, but the thing that we want to kind of report out at the end of this exercise from your group is, we want to come up with that one word, uh, that's going to make this comprehensive plan a success. Um, so, as you're talking about the, the vision in the future, in these opportunities, in these assets, uh, how can you summarize that in one word that's going to make the comprehensive plan a success? Okay? All right. Again, another, uh, 10, 10 to 30 minutes, or however long it takes to, to get your discussions. All right, so, we're gonna give our summaries again. So, what, what I'd like you to kind of summarize, talk a little bit about some of the assets that you, you listed, uh, some of the opportunities, and then end with your one word, uh, for the plan's success. And we'll start, we'll start over here this time.
Okay, our assets are location. We are located strategically by every highway. You can get to about anywhere in 30 minutes. If you take the express, you can be in Irving in 25. Um, access to transportation. Our parks and our open spaces, we have a lot to offer in that. We have, we have a multitude of parks. We have people gather, we have the trails. Our schools, we have a good school system, and we're steadily getting better, and we're offering even more in our CTE programs, which I'm very proud of them. Um, our underdeveloped land, that is an asset, because we don't have to shoe-fit anything in. We can plan appropriately and bring things into these spaces. Public safety, we have a great police department, and so far, our response time for our police and our fire department have been really good, except in one small little area, but we'll get to that one. Okay, now, our, and our neighborhood involvement. We have a lot of neighborhoods where people actually get out and work with each other and talk with each other. Our, our neighborhood watch programs, we have some neighborhoods we still need to work with, but we've got good neighborhood involvement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, our opportunities. Again, the ability for growth. We have a lot of land that we can grow in. Housing, commercial, industrial, we have a lot to offer. Our retail areas, the expanding of our retail and making better ones that we already have. Um, expanding our educational opportunities, our secondary education, we need to do more of that here. If we can educate people here all the way through, then we maybe keep them here, living and working here. Um, the opportunities shape and grow. We have, we have everything to a point where we can kind of mold where we want things to be. We still have a lot of open space. And we, the redevelopment of our older areas, we do need to give attention to that, but part of bringing in helps to pay for the redevelopment and the revitalization of neighborhoods that need us. One word for the, for plan's success, I'm stuck on implementation, but also, what was the other one we were talking about? Act. Implementation and act, following through.
Um, live, work, and play, we want to build more on our transportation and housing. And again, family-oriented, we have a lot of parks and schools that are really good in this city. Uh, guide transition, diverse employment, we need to get more different employment opportunities to bring more different types of jobs into the city. Uh, flexible, good school district is a good asset of ours. Build work source. Eastfield, we felt was an asset as well, bringing in, um, viable jobs as well as residents. Our proximity to Dallas wa- is also an asset as well. We're so close to bringing that together. Lots of green space, and we don't want to lose all of it. Uh, entertainment, destination, we need to build on our conferences and our rodeo, get people to come and, come, come to Mesquite as a place to, to come and see us. Redevelopment of our aging commercials, commercial opportunities there. Uh, the I-90 corridor, if it comes through, um, is going to be a good opportunity for us as well. Uh, build on our family fun image. First-time home buyer, we, we want to tout the Come Grow With Us, get the new homeowners to come in. Create a place for our, for all neighborhoods. Family growth and support, and our park branding. We talked about branding parks for community growth within the different communities. Our one word that we felt was engagement. We've got to get engagement throughout the community to make this a success.
Thank you, okay. We're going to go through, uh, the first three. First of all, how do you see Mesquite in 10 to 20 years? And that is in the process of revitalizing our neighborhoods and our retail areas. And Jennifer, you had a, i- it's terrific, and we all talked about the same thing here, and that is, our greatest challenges, our aging neighborhoods and our retail areas are also our greatest opportunities because of our, uh, transportation corridors, our closeness to Dallas, uh, and, uh, just like you were saying, our green space. The fact is, is that our greatest asset is our neighborhoods, and our greatest opportunities are neighborhoods and our retail areas. We talked at length about Town East Mall, and the fact that as we continue to evolve Town East Mall, uh, the concept or the idea is, is that it becomes a destination location, so that people want to go to Town East Mall from around the region. And that does exactly as you're saying, which is continues to fill our tax coffers, so that we can afford to revitalize our neighborhoods, so we can continue to afford to revitalize our aging infrastructure in a way that benefits, um, our citizens. And so, the one word that would make Mesquite's comprehensive plan a success is listening. And what we mean by listening is not listening to then prepare to speak, or letting the citizens talk but ignoring them, but listening to our citizens and listening to hear, incorporating what the citizens are asking for in their neighborhoods, in their retail areas, for jobs, industrialization that fits with our neighborhoods. When we listen to our neighbors, when we listen to our citizens with the idea to listening to what they're saying, not listening to prepare for what we're saying, that's what's going to make our comprehensive plan process a true success. And so, the 10 to 20 years from now, we're looking out at a sea of revitalized neighborhoods, retail areas, and job centers to take advantage of all of the things, uh, that can make Mesquite right at the top of our area. So, appreciate all of that.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's great. So, again, any, anything surprising that, that you all kind of talked about and heard from your tables? That's great. So, I'm going to go through, uh, next steps, and then we'll have the mayor come up and kind of give us some final comments and allow anybody else, uh, any, any final comments, um, before we wrap up. Uh, but in terms of the next step, so, we'll be here bright and early in the morning, talking to city staff, various departments, um, and later tomorrow night, we're meeting with stakeholders, so the ISD and, um, some other entities within the city that are stakeholders, uh, for the City of Mesquite. And so, we're going to kind of go through some similar, uh, exercises, but they have different concerns, and so, we're going to address different questions to, to those various groups. But, we'll be here pretty much all day tomorrow, gathering that information. Um, so, we'll continue gathering information. You'll see there, uh, the Town Hall Tuesday, um, that's an opportunity for, uh, the citizens to come out and give us their input as well. So, um, this is not going to be your Town Hall, uh, meetings of the, you know, 30, 40 years ago, where they come and sit and just listen to somebody talk. Uh, but we're going to en- engage them, we're going to have some interactive exercises for them to, uh, partake in. And so, make sure that you kind of spread the word. Again, pick up the information in the, uh, survey card, so you could pass that out, um, as well. And so, we'll, we'll continue with that data gathering, um, developing the community snapshot, which is just kind of getting a good, uh, feel and sense of the community as it stands today, which kind of helps to set that foundation as we move forward into the plan. Um, and then that's going to help us, um, develop the guiding principles or the goals for the plan. So, before we go off into the various elements, we want to make sure that we, um, all agree upon some guiding principles. What, what's going to guide the plan? What, what's going to kind of be our goals? And, and we want to use those to build off for the rest of the recommendations within the plan. Um, so, that's kind of the next steps, um, that we'll, we'll do with this group. Uh, we have, I think, three or, three more meetings, I believe, with you all. So, as we kind of walk through this process, uh, we'll be meeting with you. Um, we're going to have some more, uh, interact, interactive exercises. We're going to, this, this is a process. We're going to roll up our sleeves, we're going to get busy, and so, um, stay tuned for that information as it come forth. So, thank you for your time tonight, uh, we really appreciate it and all of your input. Mayor?
I think most of you have been listening like us to the rain, so if I can talk long enough, it'll quit raining. No, I'm just kidding. You know, we really appreciate you had all your work and, and just getting us started and getting, getting us going down the right path. You know, I'm encouraged tonight, because we've got a room full of people, and quite frankly, there's a lot of agreement in this room of what needs to be done. And, uh, you know, there's a, there's a saying, great minds think alike. But, you know what? We need that diversity. We need all the different inputs. We need the public input. We need to be listening to everyone, uh, to see what we want Mesquite to look like over the next 10, 15, 20 years. And I know you've all had the same conversations around your table, uh, you know, do we want this, do we want that, do we want, you know, different, different areas and ways? But, the main thing is, is we want Mesquite to be that great city that it's been in the past and continues to be in the future. And I think that's what we're all, that's what we're all striving for. Um, we'll have plenty of opportunities for everybody to share. Um, I will say this, tonight, when you get home, after you have a, well, you've already eaten, so after you go home and kiss your wife or spouse, www.citymesquite.com/compplan, right? All right, so, we're all going to fill that out tonight or tomorrow and get that going. Um, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion in second? All of the favors say aye? Aye. Thank you all for being here tonight.